Good evening, everybody. Glad you made it. Today is Thursday, March 1st. It's 7:04. We're going to have a regular meeting. Stand up and do your pledge of allegiance. So we can start.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
We'd like to honor moments of silence. Military firefighters, road workers, and sheriff's deputies as they serve our community here and abroad. Thank you. Ms. Tracy, will we have roll call, please?
Phil Simp and Clark.
Present.
Phil Simp and Clark.
Present.
Tracy Bet.
Okay, so the first thing is review and approval of prior meeting lists. There's a few of them here. You've got some special meetings, so... And they're, again, sent these to you electronically. I didn't print them out and put them in a packet. Try to save on the, uh, the, uh, cost of township. But anyway, it's the, uh, special meeting on 2/2, special meeting on 2/7, special meeting on 2/9. The work session of the last meeting, which was the second meeting in February at 2:15, and then the regular meeting of the last meeting on February 15. And we have special meeting on February 17. We have special meeting on the 24th. So, um, we're looking to get those meetings minutes per... Have the trustees had a chance to look at those?
Yes.
Yes.
Glad to make a motion. We approve those minutes we spoke of.
A second.
I could, uh, I don't have, I don't know if I forgot to put the, uh, uh, he right, Tracy's different, okay? You know, I want you to raise your...
I'm not... She were Tracy.
Tracy.
Tracy McQuaid.
Epstein.
Tracy Bet.
Yes.
Tracy McQuaid.
Yes. Minutes approved.
Okay, I'll go pass them down on it. I'm gonna pass them back to him. So what are you gonna do now? They do now. One more today.
Because I know.
It doesn't matter, he's staying.
Hmm?
Okay.
Yeah, you can say something.
Oh, okay, he's...
He's saying...
I mean, he could put a stain next to it if he wanted.
Yeah, you can put a stain next to it, maybe.
Thank you.
Okay, so that's, next thing on the business, uh, on the, uh, agenda, looks out there, is the fiscal officers' report. Tracy, I've been through this agenda, we missed a few things. Last minute, I...
Chief Wright, here's a copy for you if you want. Um, I passed out, um...
That's out here? No, what?
The, I got the system, the cash fund. Cash fund, I mean, by putting it on the table if they want a copy. I also gave the trustees a comparison of budget versus appropriate and appropriation. How much is being announced? Keep in mind, this is not what we've been discussing for the last week or so. None of these numbers have been changed because that won't be approved until, till Thursday.
Yeah, Thursday.
Yeah, Thursday. So none of these numbers have been changed. Um, also keep in mind that I haven't... I've been doing payroll and paying employees, but I haven't been able to record any UAM. And I have not done bankruptcy facilitation for January nor now February. So none of those, those monies come out of the salaries.
You, you know, salaries, you should have paid, you have, you have...
I paid them, but I haven't... UAM record where, is where I recorded.
Okay.
So that you guys can see it. I have not been able to record that, yeah.
Is that a firewall with what, what is this?
No, not for, no. I have, I have a lot to do. I just haven't, I haven't had a lot to do. But that's what I've been, I've been working towards. Every time I can, I can. So I'm getting there. But I gotta get to do the bankruptcy facilitation. The only way I can do the bankruptcy facilitation is to record all that. So I got a job ahead of me. But we're still paying the bills. I'm getting those recorded, so you'll see the sum stuff. I may, because I have to get those recorded in order to pay the bills.
I've seen checks here today, I remember seeing that.
No, not today. Payroll was this week. I've been focusing on the payroll. Every two weeks, I gotta shell everything down and do payroll. Make sure it gets paid.
Yeah, Mike, don't interrupt her. Absolutely. Yeah, don't, don't do that, do it, don't.
What that does.
Absolutely.
Um, so, once we get rolling, we should do, I think if we're doing good, we gotta get POs done, um, and all that. My issue right now is, um... Something to do, uh, I think my, my main concern is we're spending a whole bunch of money and I don't know who's keeping track of it right now. So I hope we don't come and, uh, get everything cut up that somebody doesn't have any money to finish out the year. So I don't think we're going that fast. It's getting pretty close. Any questions for me?
Where's all that money that you, you were talking about? Where's that coming out of?
Oh, right now, mostly the fire department.
Okay.
I mean, we're paying just regular bills on, you know, everywhere else. Nobody's buying things. Of course, they're doing remodeling the station 59. So they gotta fix that building up to get it up to, up to standard. I'm just worrying that we're not keeping track of it. And now, so just with my tape when I sat down, it's a need, um, doors, the door.
Yeah.
And I feel like 26? I think we all got a copy of it.
Yeah.
I'm not, I don't know if I'm reading that right.
I can answer that one. Um, I had heard from last year, we're getting the doors, we're getting the doors. Nothing has seemed to happen. So I made a call with, um, this guy, to one of our vendors because we had no doorers to get the vehicles, to get the doors up without having someone stand there, push the button, drive the handles off, push the button, and run out. It's delaying our response time. So I was trying to get some remote program. I found the box old ones, some are usable, some are not. Uh, but I asked if they would be interested in giving us a quote. They gave us a quote in March of last year. That's how you have right there. They said they would honor it from a year, 11 months ago. So I printed that. Each of you have a copy of that. That was the March of 2021 testament to our facility doors. Um, our, two of our doors are just glass. And the heat is going out like that.
This is 59, right?
They said...
You say that, it's in March?
In March of last year. Wasn't even, uh, they survived it. But one of our doors is so-so on our insulation value. No one's worse than the other two are non-existent. That's their glasses. They're not even...
So the picture you have on this bill, is that correct? Is this, is this last little door?
I'm sorry.
Okay, so you made a comment that you're losing all kind of heat. Door is here now.
Two of the doors are nothing but glass. If you stand outside, people try and even see you right all the way to the front.
The paint.
Oh, oh, I follow you. Okay, now the whole door's glass, this is...
No, the bathroom door, bathroom door, those doors are totally glass.
See, this, these would be painted.
Okay.
Those, those are the manufacturers' samples of what I think.
But if this was, if we were looking at the doors now, these would be painted, all of them.
So again, that's simply just for your information I found. And, uh, and that's just one that you desire to look further at. Contact others and reach out to...
So I'll ask a, I'll ask a dumb question. I mean, I'm not a fireman, so, uh, you've got three people in the building on duty, and you got a fire and you gotta leave. You made a comment, somebody pushes the button and then, you know, which we have today, have to sit there and wait for the door, the door closed. When everything's fixed, how do you know that that, that door's shut? I mean, are you, 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 you open the door up and you leave?
You push your button in the remote in the engine.
Okay.
And look back and say, "Oh, yeah."
Okay, you know, just sit there and wait for it to go over down.
Your, your, they should, they should get one.
Okay.
It depends on the nature of the call. If it's something mire, um, then they may set, set that away.
So when you're looking...
Just for security.
You should also be able to get a, maybe some type of signal someplace that tells you that it is shut. You know, you think technology the way it is today. Oh.
Yeah, you want a little device in the fire engine saying your door is closed.
Well, camera, so, I mean, we, we, yeah, the camera's working, right?
So when you're getting these, uh...
I don't know, we turned off a little bit of access to the camera, but...
So when you're getting these quotes, are you looking at the budget to make sure that we're, we're okay to get this?
Uh, from the budgeting, yeah, there's nothing in that budget for the ownership, other than the, what's it called? The capital improvement fund?
Right.
I believe that was the intention as we were stocking away money every year for the vehicle expenditure or station expenditure.
So is this where you're talking about taking that money from?
Again, we not budgeted it, it was not planned on. It doesn't work. I had that budget meeting, did not even know about us. So it's been since, uh, that would be where I would suggest looking.
Cause I remember talking with Chief Wright about the, the need for the, those doors. He talked about that a while ago.
So your original comment, guys, was that the operator is malfunctioning. But we also made a comment, obviously, much heat. And that gets, okay. So they gotta be replaced. They need to be replaced.
Two, two of those actually have no others.
You established a new purchasing policy. We need three bids on this.
Oh, Eric, I could have...
I, I, I agree with that.
So...
We, we adopted...
25 grand. I voted no on it.
Doesn't matter, right?
I think any over 25, 150, is that right? 2500?
Yes.
If, if you, burden, if you allow contact to more vendors if you desire.
Please.
Now, while we're looking at doors, do we need to do something with the door on the quantity? Cause I know the guy that did some framing work. If that's something...
Yeah, but that'd be a totally different, uh, different monies and different contract. Yes, we do need to do something with that. Um, that doesn't need to be as done as soon, as quick as this needs to be done. So, yes, that's, that's something that needs to be addressed.
I mean, while we're working with a door, I mean, we're gonna have to get it swabber.
Are there any large expenditures that you think you're gonna need at 59? That you know of right now?
No, probably get the last one. I mean, uh, possibly lighting. I know we're in bad shape. There was talk, I mean, over the last year about LED lighting going in there. Uh, did they ever come up with an estimate over a prime of 400, chief?
No, they never come up with an estimate. Um, we had a couple of guys in there take a look at it. And they recommended taking the fluorescents down and putting the round LEDs in there. Put out more light and use less electricity.
So are these are things that, as we've had a conversation, that we can start looking forward to doing in the future? Like start putting some things down that we're working toward as opposed to just buying stuff at the last minute? So I think that, I don't think that that's an emergency. Um, and I think it's something we could probably plan for maybe next year.
Over half the fixtures are out. 59 in the bay.
When you say, oh, they're out?
They're not working.
So how are, how's, how are we living?
They're not working because of light?
No, I'm not out in the bay with the apparatuses. Over half the fixtures in the ceiling. They put a lot of fluorescent tubes. Over half...
And then you just need new nightclubs.
Can, can I ask a question? So how do you know it's not more than just replacing? How you know it's not an electrical or wiring issue?
Correct.
There's gonna be a lot more money?
We had ceiling work done in there, you know?
That's, that's when they got up there and worked with them. It's out. It's like he said, it may be a malice. So I'll be like, I'll get an electrician. But again, they gotta get one of those scissors because it's so hot. So we get an electrician out there to try to get it turned back on. But we were trying to...
Now you guys are bumsing, um, now. How are you bumsing me now? I mean...
During the evening time when it started out, three of the nightlights were working. It's very dark inside.
But if you recall, I did all of it in 61, a year ago or nine months ago. And the cost of the fluorescents, tubes that we changed, all the nightlights, meaning every time you turn the lights off, there's one by the emergency exit. All of those alone paid for themselves in 1.9 months, 24 tubes. We saved nearly $1,000 here in electricity of those running 24 hours a day in 61.
Right, I get that. I think my issue is more that we wanna start, um, planning, putting things in the budget. Now, I do this in my bedtime here and not any lights, but is there a way you can get, just get some quotes on things? And, and better yet, can you, like, just to evaluate what is all needed? And, uh, and try to determine what the cost is gonna be? Um, and things that are not an emergency or an emergent need, plan for, for next year? Um, and separate it like that? Can you come up with something like that?
Again, we're eight fixtures down to three. The other three may be out by next year. But I'll be happy to get a little electrician out there.
But you have, but you have a, uh, maintenance guy on the table? What's it, what's that, what's that title? You, uh...
But he's only 5'11". We've still gotta get something in there, a scissors to get it...
You can have a scissor lift for a day to look at the fixtures. I mean, but instead of hiring, instead of having electrician look at them, we have got to get house.
I don't have many of that, that wire, the winder is good electricity.
There is.
Yes.
Okay, so we, we have a county parole yard. I know that.
Where?
That, have rental yards. I'll, I'll, I'll get you, we'll get you a scissor lift. Uh, we own a trailer. We'll get you a lift, take you down there and have a go, probably take a look at it and, and do a investigation. What do they need? Is it just loose ground? Is it a ballast, like Jim said? You know, is there, is there replacement on the fixtures? And then if we do need it replaced, we go down next year and decide what we need to do. I'd hate for those three to go out. We need to, maybe we're gonna have, you know, five of them running.
Okay, it's not been a concern with the department because we have been in there. So now, now in my back, we're finding...
You did have those things checked out?
I mean, we've got an accountant, Becker's. So if they need ballast, so, all that, or even replace a couple of fixtures.
Yeah, okay. Well, anyway, I can, we can, we can tell the financial report.
It works. I'm done.
Glad to make a motion to accept the financial officers' report. Change bills.
That's that, second.
Tracy McQuaid.
Yes.
Tracy McQuaid.
Yes.
Tracy Bet.
Yes.
Okay, so that's the financial report. Next on there is old business. The first thing on the agenda for old business is the budget discussions.
Did you make the motion to pay all the bills and stuff? I missed that. Did you say that, say you, and you?
The shield's second.
Thank you.
Okay, so, uh, we've been having budget meetings. We have one last, one left, uh, tomorrow or Thursday. And it's the wrap-up. Um, if I'll be pretty involved meeting. We hope to be able to do that and make a decision on the final question.
Well, now, if you had the discussion, I was hoping it wouldn't be a real while. We just have to look through the numbers and, and I'm hoping I can get you guys the things I was hoping today, but tomorrow. I'm hoping it won't be a real while discussion. It shouldn't be a while.
Uh, you, we, we, do we discuss the IT replacement vendor? Think one good there?
Uh, well, I do, do want to, uh, because Jim was, um...
Is there a copy of the...
Sorry.
Is there a copy of the quote, yeah?
Yeah, I have that, but we, um, uh, Chief Will Cox and I, we met with three different vendors. Elite Computers, IMS, and Pro Stratus. Um, uh, we went with Elite Computers because they had best offer. Um, I have to make copies, but if you wanna see this one right now, you can see it. Um, we sat down and, uh, uh, thank you, Chief Will Cox, for helping out with that. Um, and we, um, were able to meet with each vendor. They went over, um, the services they provided. We compared what we were receiving from our previous IT company. And, um, found that, um, Elite Computers had the best, um, offered the best, um, as far as pricing. And they kinda matched apple to apples. Some stuff was like all in one as opposed to we were paying extra for Buckeye. Um, so, uh, we're actually getting a better deal. They came in, got real busy, and everything has been transferred over. The only thing that, um, and I talked with, um, the, uh, IT from Elite, and he said, everything's transferred over. The only issue is the spam Titan. Um, Buckeye is gonna allow us to just kinda wait until tomorrow, I think, to continue until they get that part switched over. That's the only part that wasn't switched over, and Buckeye was okay with that.
So we don't have another one?
So why don't...
No, we don't have another one.
Why don't the trustees get a chance to vote this out and look at all three proposals?
Because you weren't around.
So you guys didn't approve this?
Excuse me?
So you didn't approve this at the moment?
No, it wasn't approved.
Okay.
It's not a contract. It's not a contract. We paid per month. So it's not a contract.
We, we didn't have the...
Right, but it's not a contract, so I didn't have to.
Okay, so we got that, thank you. Uh, next thing on the old business is using electric time cards. Uh, you just kind of, you're talking about this quite a bit with the meeting. Um, Tracy, do you know, uh, Paycor, what their price is on establishing, putting us, electric time cards in?
No, I'm, um... The question is whether we can compare apple to apple because of TrackSmart and Paycor. We were trying to run one system. So we need to have a meeting with Paycor to see if they can do what TrackSmart does. And then...
I, I...
Go there.
Well, me myself, I'm against having one person do all that. Look, I, I, I think that we need separation of that and, uh...
So you want time clocks? You don't wanna have it done on a computer?
No, 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 computer, that's hard to tell, computer.
So we have to, we have to kinda get an idea of how we can do that, because...
We already own computers. And we're already paying for the, we're already paying for that service with, we paid no extra money with TrackSmart to, to get that service now. And we own, we own computers. It's basically turning it on and then starting a new training process. You have to work on, you know, training the supervisors and work on them training the employees.
I know what you want, okay, but I'm gonna tell you this right now.
Yes, talk to them.
Get somebody to do payroll and HR immediately. Because you guys are just keep on power and work on me, and I can't continue to keep doing it. So I need somebody to do HR and payroll. That, at that point, you can do whatever you want with the time clock to whatever. I don't have any idea, I don't have any idea. I can give you a point of contact. Salesperson that I've talked to that's been contacting me. You can talk to them about that. I don't have the time to make that, okay? I'm telling you that I have to put it off a couple more weeks, two months to talk, you know, to sit down. I don't know other questions. You guys have...
I'm not, I'm not a payable person. I mean, I, I turn, I do my time. It's like something I take care of, and I get out of back of pocket every week. I, I'm not, I'm not a payable person. I hate doing taxes and all that. But outside looking in, would not be, doing this change, wouldn't your job be easier?
No, it wouldn't change my job at all. I still have to input that into it. It wouldn't change my job at all.
So you're given, you're given a paper time sheet from all employees now. You gotta look at every one of them, and then...
Who's gonna verify that, that what they put in there?
The, 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 the road superintendent or the fire chief?
I still have to get reports to do, put in the UAM. It's not, that payroll just doesn't stop when you put the stuff in Paycor and they send out the check. In order for you guys to know, we have to get it on our budget. UAM has to, then I have to get reports from Paycor in order to...
That part you've been doing for years. You want the, you need a person to just, just kinda... So you wanna go between, between what TrackSmart produces and what we stick in Paycor. We still need a person doing that. And that'd be the, the, a person in the office doing that.
Why? Cause I thought we were gonna hire a part-time...
Yes, and, and, and I agree with that. If, if, if you wanna wait, if you wanna wait to do that till that happens, I'm okay with that.
Yeah.
Well...
Jim, you have any thoughts on that, or you...
So... All the time sheets roll up into that one-page summary, which is like about 35 grand every page period. So all the time sheets roll up into that one sheet. And that's where our, that's what we wire in to Paycor to pay our payroll, right?
Um, Paycor, no, they actually have that, and they give me the reports, so... And then I put that in UAM, so it's kinda the other way around. When we give them, when I put all the data in for our time, then they generate all the reports and all, and all that tax stuff and everything. They don't have to do that. And then they give me the reports and then I put it in the UAM. And that's when I create that summary sheet that you get all the time sheets in. And then I summary sheet, that's what the, they direct debit. They also direct debit out of our, um, our checking account. I just have, in order for the report in our system, I have to input all that data in the UAM. So...
All that data?
I'm not saying that.
All that data, the employee data in UAM? You took, you used the hours?
The amounts.
Yeah, okay, okay.
But it's not that simple. You make it sound simple, it's not simple.
Okay, I, I don't do it, I don't look.
It's all the stuff that you guys, I have to do percentages and all that crap that you go with.
So there's more of a, I've been hearing there's a hangup. In case of what, can we find a better cost? Can we find it cheaper? Somebody, there's more of a, more of a hangup internally in our system. Who's doing what? It's somebody that's more of a, more of a hangup internally in our system. Who's doing what? And getting, and proceeding forward to next one back.
It's not really a hangup. I'm doing it. I mean, there's no.
I, I know you've missed your head. That's why I've been doing the, uh, the minutes.
So when you're, so when you're doing, when you're loading payroll, you're in Paycor, you've got like an employee building up on the street. You got the time sheet in front of you and you've got.
It's just a, really, it's a pay grade that everybody's name on it. And I just, really just going and type all the stuff. But first, there's more work to do because Track, yeah, TrackSmart, um, he'll give me, well, actually, they do each of the time sheets. I'll go and just look at the bottom line. I don't even check. Somebody else has to check that. Even if they added it wrong, I don't check. I just put what their bottom number is.
I have a call.
Okay, thank you. I keep getting nervous on that, okay.
And then you hear the motion.
Yeah.
And I just put the bottom line, say added wrong, if there was a thing. The only problem I'm having comes from some pressure because when they have holidays. When they have vacation, they don't, they just still put eighty down there after four times. Well, how much of the eighties holidays, how much of the vacations? So I'm still having that. And I understand that, um, that would be a benefit to have a time clock. But there's just a lot more to it than that, so.
Okay, well.
It's gonna take some time. It's not gonna happen overnight is what I'm trying to say.
I'm, I'm, I'm not getting.
I mean, we don't, don't back up off of it, but we just gotta get, we gotta get some of this structure taken care of before we.
Okay.
Get started.
So that comes back to how do we reconcile vacation? Cause the way that I understand the system. Somebody goes to their supervisor for approval of their vacation, like on an employee action form. And then, okay, they report vacation. So we got a piece of paper document and time off vacation, doctor's plan, whatever, so. And then that's shown on, on the time sheet. So if we ever have to reconcile vacation. You take the report from Paycor plus directs all the employee action forms. Those should line up, right?
So I get that for answer what you said. First of all, when you hire an employee, then schedule in our employee handbook that says, if you got one year, you get this. So we put those in each one of the employees. They put like that schedule in there. So Paycor's program automatically does that for us. It automatically, cause if you put it in the, there's a lot of things you have to input into that software. If you didn't put it, say you hired an employee, and you didn't put that schedule in our handbook in there, then they're not gonna get those vacation or those six, or six, that across the board, the same for everybody. You just put a number now. But like with, our vacation time, it's got a schedule. If you're here some of the year, you have to make sure you put that information in there. You know, I had to learn all this, and I got it from my lab. But you gotta put that in every time you have, or have, you know, hiring an employee. But you can adjust.